Mr. Singer, Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Cho Walter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingleseames?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last meeting of May the ninth. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
And Ms. Conaway with the second. All in favor say aye.
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 opposed. Thank you. In your packet, you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate that you received that. So we'll dive right into the public comments. First item on our agenda, Ms. Candace Whitehouse. Hello?
I'm Candace Whitehouse, and I spoke to you last week. But this week, I'm here to invite you tomorrow is Kentucky Gives Day. Hopefully, you all are aware of that. Kentucky Nonprofit is encouraging people all over Kentucky to donate to nonprofits. And you can donate to us, that would be great. Find us on Facebook. But what I'm really here to do is invite you to Panera tomorrow for dinner. They are going to donate a percentage of all their profits from four to eight P.M. tomorrow night. So bring your family, bring your friends, and come have dinner at Panera. And the more people we have there, the more of a percentage they donate. So it helps us to get lots of people there. I think I have all of your emails in our outbox, or whatever that's called. And so I will be sending out a flyer tomorrow for you to show them, because they have to see the flyer. So just look for that tomorrow and come eat dinner with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate Candace bringing the Kentucky Gives Day to our attention. It benefits a lot of nonprofits across Kentucky. They make it very easy to do online contributions, and it just supports all of the nonprofits that do great work in our community. So, thank you, Candace. Anyone else that wanted to make public comments this evening? Then you leave me no alternative.
Go to it, Mayor. Go to it.
But to begin the Mayor's comments. Just a couple of brief points. Some longer than others, some more brief than others. Wanted you all to know that we have met with the representatives from Nice-Lukens and gotten our mid-year insurance update. That becomes a real important exercise for us now that we're partially self-insured. And pleased to report to the council that midway through that budget year, the performance is at or ahead of where we expected to be. There's always a concern when you begin a self-insurance program, that you need to have a year or two of decent, of favorable claims experience, to make sure the program gets off on a sound foundation. And we are well down the path to achieving that. So I think our policy gets more and more secure, or the council's decision becomes more and more secure, as we get more time under our belt. And we're also at the point with our policy to where we're, while we're covered for a, on our reinsurance for a 12-month period, we actually have claims coverage that extends back for 24 months. So it's the safest position that we can be in. Some will do an exact 12 to 12, some will do a 20 to 12. But the safest for the taxpayer is that we have this 24-12, and we are locked into that point, and our performance has been good to this date. Just wanted to mention, because it's always a topic that gets our citizens' attention, and you all get calls about holiday trash collection. Wanted you to know that on, with Memorial Day coming up, that we will be picking up Monday trash on Tuesday, is the working plan. So if you get any calls or complaints, we'll be catching up on Tuesday. But that is the plan as of this point. Recycling Center is always
Closed Mondays anyway.
Closed on Monday anyway. What we've elected to do this year, which is a change. In the past, the recycling center, if they were closed on, if Monday was a holiday, they've also been closed on Tuesday, to get their time off. We've decided that the public needs that center open. So we are asking those employees to take off Sunday and Monday, and come back to work on Tuesday.
So are they getting holiday time pay or something?
They'll get an extra eight hours of pay. It won't be holiday, it won't be plus, but it'll be straight hours, and they will get that for Tuesday. That didn't make everyone happy, but we thought it was the service that our citizens expect. Just a reminder that this coming Saturday, over Memorial Day weekend, we will start the Farmer's Market in the new location. It'll be back here at the foot of the city parking lot, right on the corner of Broadway and Washington. Hours will be slightly relaxed, since it's a Saturday. Instead of eight to 12, it'll be nine to one down here. So can't wait for the Farmer's Market to get started again. Also, just in terms of Memorial Day activities, of course, our community is, our veterans have long had a tour of all the cemeteries in Scott County that happen on Memorial Day. And many of those veterans will actually travel the entire Memorial Day and visit each of those cemeteries. There'll be an opportunity for that group to be at the Georgetown Cemetery. It's normally mid-afternoon.
About three or four o'clock.
Three or four o'clock.
Press law is used around two.
Yeah. But that's a very poignant ceremony that we have at each of these cemeteries, but especially in the Georgetown Cemetery. Just a reminder, on June the first, we're going to have a statewide legislative update from the Kentucky League of Cities. That will be held at the Farm Extension Office, I believe at six o'clock.
That's right.
Does that sound right? Some of KLC's legislative staff will be over to help us talk through what bills did pass, which ones didn't, and what we can anticipate changing. Couple of things have changed very significantly. The one that will probably, we will end up talking about the most, is there have been significant changes in the state law concerning code enforcement, and the way we will move forward with code enforcement issues in the future. We've had several different choices about the way we could, we could move forward, but the General Assembly has now eliminated those other options. And what we're going to be left with is a more robust approach. But I think it will help us answer a lot of questions that we've had, as we decide how we, as a city, a county, and how we might partner with Sadie Bill and Stamp and Ground, all will come together. So we'll hear a lot more about code enforcement and the way that law has changed. We'll also hear a little bit about a piece of legislation that I asked to be introduced. I know there's been an interest from some council members over the years in the question of electing council members by wards or districts versus at-large. And there are a lot of feelings on both sides of that issue. The concern that I've always had has been that state law has only given us two options, to either be all wards, or all at-large. And I've long thought that if we were even going to have those conversations, that I would like for us to have the option of looking at a blended opportunity, where there might be, for example, six council members elected by wards, and perhaps two elected at-large, similar to the way the Lexington Fayette Urban County Council is elected, with some districts and some wards. They're able to do that only because they were formed under special legislation for urban county governments. So this year, we ask introduction, legislation be introduced, that would allow cities like Georgetown that may want to have this conversation, to consider a blend of wards and at-large, so that we're not completely hamstrung under one scenario or the other. That passed, so that when we're ready to have those conversations, we've got a degree of flexibility that we haven't had in the past. We were aware that this last Saturday was hazardous material day at a Toyota, and what an incredible community success story. It's been going well, and especially since we went to every year doing the hazardous material day. Our reports this year is that we took care of 200 additional carloads than we did last year.
Wow, that's good.
So we continue to clean our garages, we continue to clean out ugly materials that shouldn't go into our landfill, and real proud of that result. Also, wanted council to know, we've heard quite a bit about the basketball courts at Ed Davis Park, and our desire to get those paved as quickly as we could. Been working with Richard Hamilton at Hamilton Henkel. And remarkably, this corporate partner, who has helped us with other issues, like snow removal and some other big projects in the city, because of the need for these basketball courts to be paved quickly, they've agreed to pave the courts at cost, and then split that cost with us.
Can't beat it.
Oh, wow. That's good.
So I think it's a great corporate gesture. We're going to end up, by working that out with Hamilton Henkel, it not only gives us a chance to do the paving immediately out of the current year's budget, but it limits our expenditure to $7,500 to get that done. Now, that will mean that, of course, rain weather did not cooperate last week.
Yeah.
And they just couldn't get much done last week. As soon as possible, they're going to mill the areas that need milling, pave the courts. Then we want to let them sit for two weeks. Apparently, they need to cure for two weeks before they put the vinyl sealer on it, and the graphics package on it. So working with Ed Davis Center, and their leadership, they'll probably have to push back the start date of their summer league by maybe a week.
It's not bad.
But they think they can incorporate that through the schedule plan, three nights instead of two. So want to compliment our corporate partner, and let you all know that very quickly, those courts will be paved, and it'll be done out of the current year's budget. Also, to let you know that tomorrow, we will have another Revenue Commission meeting, a called meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, at which we'll, we're going to go about some of the more routine business of the commission, establishing a set meeting date each month, so that some of these things happen on a more regular basis than they may have occurred in just the very recent past. We'll have a review from our legal counsel on where the lawsuits stand, and how our collections go. And also, Megan will have a report for the commission on the applicants that we've received for the director's position. And we've finally gotten in some real qualified applicants, and feel pretty good about those. Megan has appointed a committee, I believe, of six people, and they will be doing interviews of six candidates tomorrow. The committee will form their opinion on the top three candidates, and those three will be taken to the commission, and the commission can review those resumes, and handle their own interviews as they see fit. So progress being made there. And that is the end of the Mayor's comments.
Mayor, could we add one little item that the planning and zoning asked us to relay? It's the comp plan, the public comp plan meeting is June the 14th, and it's going to be at the Extension Office from six until eight. And they just wanted us to make that announcement, and I thought it'd be better to do it during your comments, versus the end of the meeting, where people might be kind of falling off. Our ratings might be dropping towards the end.
They'll warn them out by then.
TV turned off.
They watch us all the time during.
Hey, your email works.
That's right.
Absolutely. And that's for all the committees, David?
That is correct. And for the public?
For the public.
That's right.
That's for everyone.
Okay. June 14th.
So if you could announce that, Mayor?
Be glad to. We'll put it on our Facebook page.
All right.
Yes, share it.
Everybody join us on June the 14th, at the Extension Office, from six to eight. We're going to talk about the comprehensive plan.
There you go.
Anything else under Mayor's comments?
Your comments.
There you go. Moving quickly along with the agenda, Andrew and I have a bet here on the over-under. And I'm
So far, I'm losing.
I can't tell you what time it is, so I don't know who's winning.
There are a couple of things later in the agenda that we're
You're going to drag them out, aren't you?
We're going to slow down just a little bit, but it's all good stuff. Item seven on the agenda, one of our essential pieces of business, is a presentation of our audit 2015.
Hi, I'm Heather Cochran, with RFH. You all should have a found book in front of you, green, and then a separate letter. You all should have one of those. So the first thing I always like to mention when I'm presenting an audit, is that these financial statements are your all's financial statements. So what's in here, mine's a little bit sticky, so yours doesn't have that, but what's in here from us is a couple of reports. So we give you all, I think it's on page seven and eight, is the independent auditor's report. So that's the key thing that when you're looking at an audit, you want to look for. So the independent auditor's report, down at the bottom of page seven is the opinion. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position." So that's what we call a clean opinion. That's kind of as good as it gets in the accounting world. So when you're reading an independent auditor's report, that's kind of what you're looking for, is you're looking for that paragraph, to see what that says. So that's a clean opinion. Also in these financial statements, towards the back of the book, is another independent auditor's report. Because you're a governmental entity, there's a second report on internal control and compliance that we must give you. So on that one, there's two different pieces. There's internal control or financial reporting, and compliance and other matters. If there was something in there, it would probably be on a third page, saying that there was a finding of some kind. There's not, so all of this information in here, it says, "However, let's see, our consideration in internal controls, we did not find any material weaknesses." That's what you're kind of looking for in that letter. So there's two letters in this report, that would be our reports to you. The rest of this information, we work with Stacy to, you know, draft your financials. We go back and forth with her on getting these numbers together, but they're your financial statements. So we assist you all in it, but they're your financial statement, and those are our two letters to you all, okay? So looking at the financials, there's a lot of information in here. I kind of wanted to take you through page two. You can turn to page two. This is part of what we would call your management's discussion and analysis, but it's got a good comparative schedule in the middle of the page. This is the city's net position. So once a year, you all kind of see the financials this way, where you look at everything the city owns, all the liabilities of the city, all in one place. You don't typically kind of think of the financial statements in that regard, because you're typically thinking of budgets actual, and that expenditures, kind of current financial resources. So if you look there, under total primary government, on the far right side, 2015, you have total assets for the entire city. This includes the water and sewer service, $198,072,818 in 2015, compared with $192,942,092 in the previous year, okay? And then you've got total liabilities in 2015, $53,059,072, compared with $50,283,376 in the previous year. So what that leaves you with, is if you were able to liquidate all of those assets, pay off all your liabilities, which obviously theoretically, you can't really do, but that's kind of the theory behind this, you'd be left with total net position. So total net position, $145,013,746, compared with $142,658,716 in the previous year. Now you'll see on here, the thing that's a little bit unusual this year, and it hasn't been this way in the past, is that unrestricted net position, it's a negative $5,385,267 this year. Now you're going to look at that, and you're going to say, "That's really, really strange." And the reason is, and we've been talking with you all about this for a number of years, you all have, are part of the county employees' retirement system. So what they did this year is a new accounting standard came down that said, you all have to recognize on your books, so on these financial statements, a portion of what they call their unfunded liability. So they've determined on their financial statements, CERS is financial statements, that there's a piece of this that hasn't been funded yet. So they're saying all the cities, all the counties, all the people that participate, will have to fund that over time. So you all are paying the required percent every year, and there's actually a schedule in here, kind of towards the back, that says, what was your contribution that was required? What did you pay? Was it 100%, which it was? So it's not that you all didn't pay something you were supposed to, so I always want to make sure that's really clear, because the first thing people think is, well, did we not pay something we were supposed to? So you all did, it's nothing like that. But what's happened is, we've had to put on the books, under that other liabilities in the middle of the page. And I'll show you this kind of on the detailed financials as well. There was about a $19 million liability that went on the books this year, related to that county employees' retirement system. So what they did is, they basically said, "Okay, here's your contributions as a part of the whole. Your percent is going to be this $19 million." Now you're going to be paying that, as they increase, as they increase their rates, or as they modify their rates, you will be paying that. It's not anything you have to run out and go get money for. It's absolutely nothing like that. You're doing exactly what you should have been doing all along. It's really just an accounting change. And what, I think what the Governmental Accounting Standards Board was really trying to do, the people who write these standards, is they were wanting to get the local people more involved, and to really know, like, hey, these pensions are underfunded, you all need to know that. So I really think they were trying to like, just push it down as far as possible, so that it became a bigger issue for local governments. So that's really the big change here. And so you'll kind of see that, if we had not put those numbers on the books, I kind of did a quick little tally here, your liabilities without that liability in it, the 2014 number also has been restated on these numbers. So you kind of went back, and you've increased both sides, 14 and 15. So 14, you were at, actually liabilities were $28,591. And the 2015, if we hadn't put that liability on the books, would have been $32,070,000. Okay? So then that would have left your net position, in 14, you were at about $162 million net position. In 2015, if you had not put that liability on the books, you would have been at $164 million, instead of that $145. So that kind of gives you a little idea of, it increased your liabilities, and it decreased your overall net position, okay?
Can, while we're on this page, can you tell us
Yes, sir.
What makes up the current assets, like the 16 million? I'm sure that would be partially bank accounts, I guess, right?
Yes.
Balances?
Yes. And if you, if you turn to, let's see, page nine, you'll see that a little bit clearer on what makes that up. So you'll see the first heading is current assets. Cash and cash equivalents for the total government is $11,560. You've got some investments, you've got accounts receivable from customers, taxpayers, and so on. And then total current assets is the $16,435,117 that you see on page two.
Okay. How about then the capital assets, that larger number?
Capital assets includes the buildings that you own, streets that you own, anything that you all own. So if you look at, let's see, I think on page nine, all you're going to see is net capital assets, and then construction in progress, but where you're really going to get more detail is in the footnotes to the financial statements. And on page, I think it's page 25. On page 25, you'll see a breakdown of what we call governmental activities, which is going to be your general operations, and then your business-type activities, which the largest piece of that's going to be the water and sewer system. So you can kind of see a breakdown of, you know, how much is in land, how much is in construction in progress, what are buildings, vehicles, equipment, infrastructure, like streets, and so on. And then your business-type activities, again, same types of categories, but they also have the utility plant that's in there. So that kind of gives you the detail of that number.
So when it says utility plant, with that 141 million, would that include the lines as well then?
Yes.
Or would that be under infrastructure?
That would, that would be in that utility plant number.
But the roads would be under the infrastructure then?
Yes, absolutely. So that's kind of just a general overview of kind of the overall government for the kind of balance sheet side of things, so to speak. The next page, page three, gives you a breakdown of operating results. So this shows all the revenues for the city in 2015, the far kind of right-hand column. 2015 was $39,73,087. 2014 was $36,88,372, okay? Then you've got all of your expenses, total expenses, $36,989,500. And then in 2014, $35,349,884. And again, all of these numbers really basically come from the later statements that I'm going to kind of go over with you in brief. But I just think that's a good way to look at the kind of overall picture of current year versus prior year, so I wanted to point those out. The rest of the MDNA takes you through about page six, and then again, we have the independent auditor's report on page seven and eight. The statement of net position, which we had just mentioned, this gives you a detailed breakdown of that first statement that we looked at. I'm not going to go over that in any detail. What I really wanted to point out to you is on page 11 and 12. Page 11 is what we would call your governmental funds, so primarily, that's going to be your general fund, general operations. You look there, general operations, general fund, assets, $15,685,076, okay, in 2015. Liabilities, $2,358,500. And what you have left over, now this is done more on a current resource, what we call a current financial resources basis, so there's no capital assets in there, none of that land, none of those buildings, none of your long-term debt. These are things that you would consider would be turned over very quickly, you know, 60, 90 days after year-end, okay? So total fund balance, $13,334,226. Now if you look at your governmental funds in total, how that compared to the previous year, and it's not on this sheet, you're at total assets, $23,145. 2014 was actually at $15,946,275. So your total assets were up for all your governmental funds for this year. Now some of that has to do with some of the things that you all have going on in that capital projects fund. So that's where you were building the police, so you had some bonds and stuff that you all had issued, so you had more cash on hand, that sort of thing. Total liabilities for total governmental funds, kind of midway down the page, $6,307,412. Last year, if you had looked at that same number, it would have been $2,931,062. So liabilities were up. However, it's really some inter-fund activity, due to the way the governments have to account for things, so you see that due-to-other-fund number, $3,834,556. It's really just kind of some temporary things going between two different funds, okay? And then if you go to page, I believe it's page 13, you'll see the operations of those governmental funds. So how did you get to that total net position number? So general fund had total revenues, on page 13, of $23,781,163, okay? That compares to last year, your total 2014 totals for all your governmental funds, not just general, was $23,611. So if you looked at your general fund last year versus this year, your revenues were up, I think about $2 million. So mostly, that would have been in the license and permits number. I think the number I wrote down here from last year was $16,855. This year, they're $19,021,517, okay? Expenditures, total governmental funds, $26,668,842. If you had looked at that same number last year, your expenditures are up, so your number last year would have been $21,289,352. So it's up. However, you all have done a significant amount of capital projects this year, you all had issued some more debt, you paid off some additional debt, you all had a lot of different things that you were, you were doing. So that's why that, kind of that expenditure number is up as well. So what that leaves you with is a net change in fund balance for total governmental funds of an increase of $3,822,580, okay? The page 15 is your, what we would call your proprietary funds. So these are the things of the government that you would consider to be kind of similar to business-type activities, something that generates a user charge, like water and sewer services, garbage, those types of things. So you've got total assets of $98,113,27 for just your proprietary funds. Now again, that's primarily made up of buildings and utility plant, that type of thing. Liability, $17,963,685. And then what's left over, the net position, $79,719,391, okay? And the last page that I really want to go over with you all, is the, kind of the operating statement for proprietary. So you can see total operating revenue So you can see total operating revenues on page 16, $13,519,504. If you looked at last year's 2014 numbers, that number was about $12,686. So that number was up, primarily due to the water and sewer service numbers being up. Your expenses, total operating expenses midway down the page, $13,283,355. That compares to the previous year, $12,707,988. So expenses were also up. However, as you all know, the water and sewer service took on some additional customers. There was a lot of stuff going on there. So that makes, makes sense. You have more services being provided. The rest of these statements, you've got a statement of cash flows on the next page. And then you've also got probably about, it's significantly longer this year because we had so many additional footnotes related to the pension, the CERS information. I think there's maybe additional four, five, six pages related to additional information we had to put in there this year related to those standard changes. So page 18 through 37 just goes through those notes to the financial statements. If there's anything on these financials that you come across and you have a question about something, more than likely, there is a footnote that tells you more about it. So if you ever came across, you know, well, what makes that up that number? You can probably find something in the footnotes that'll talk about it. There is one other page of budgetary comparison information on page, I don't know if I can find it. 39, that's your general fund budgetary comparison. I always like to point that out in case you all are interested in taking a look at it as well. You were ultimately over budget, over budget on revenue, which is a good thing. And then under budget on your expenditures, which also is what you want. But that's all I really wanted to point out unless somebody has additional questions? Yes, ma'am?
Page 28, it talks about the long-term debt. And it got on the principal years, 16, 17, 18. Okay. So the principal amount is the first amount. Is that the interest, interest that was added to that principal amount? And then the million point one is what we paid? Or did we pay the seven?
So in, in 2016, what we projected that you would pay would be principal, the 773. We projected you'd pay additional interest of the 392 for total debt service of $1,166.
Did we pay the additional interest?
The interest is just what was calculated at June 30th, '15 as an estimate of what would be paid over this year. So I don't know exactly where your numbers have been lining out. Stacy would probably be able to tell you better. But that is what was estimated at that time. That would be the interest that would be paid on that debt, okay?
Okay. Gotcha. Because I think the number we used for this year for the budget was the 796, right?
And that was general fund only. But page 28 is the water company debt for the most part. So you were looking at-
At the top part is the water company debt?
Yes, we were looking at page 27.
27.
Thank you, Stacy. Yeah, you always have to be careful. There's usually footnotes related to what we call general operations, governmental activities. And then there's all the, what we call business-type activities in there too. So you have to make sure you're in the right schedule.
So is it the principal number then that's used for the budget?
Principal interest.
Principal interest.
We normally just show you full, the full amount of debt service, which includes principal reductions and interest.
Okay, gotcha.
If you look in the budget first.
Gotcha, gotcha. I was looking for that. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
And I assume, Heather, that we still characterize long-term debt as anything more than 12 months. And the portion that is payable within the next 12 months shifts to short-term debt.
What happens is, on those first financial statements, on page nine, you will see, under liabilities, there is a current portion of long-term debt. So for governmental activities, that's $621,670. So that should be the number that you saw as principal on that schedule we were just looking at for what you all would pay in 2016. So yeah, it's the amount of the next year and it'll be broken out. And then everything else ends up in bonds and notes payable, capital lease obligations, and so on, okay?
You'll see year to year as we go through debt, the amount of long-term debt should fall just a little bit. But the current year's debt will be what we expect to pay during that 12-month period that we're budgeting for. Just a nice little break in the way to look at that. And Heather has done a great job of pointing out what we've been talking about. The big change council's going to notice is finally having to account for these pension shortfalls. And what we've talked about previously, that affects primarily our balance sheet. And cities have no intention of liquidating. So the balance sheet is important to us, but it's not the same consideration that a business would have in terms of what their net worth might be. I think we're focused more on our operating statements.
Yeah. And that's why the, what we call the fund financial statements, which not page nine and 10, but the later statements. That's why those are so important to you all. Those are, those are on a little bit of a different focus. They're more on current resources. What do you all have to pay currently? What is your current obligations at the end of the year? What, what current things can you all do with that money? So that's why those are important. That's why when you do budgets, you know, you're focusing on paying the entire debt service. You're not focused on, well, what's the principal? You have to fund the entire amount over the next year. So that's why those financials are important.
And Heather's correct. The footnotes are full of good information. Someone who does not familiar with our city's financial operations can read these financials, go through the footnotes in detail, and have a real good feeling of what we're doing and how we account for it.
Yeah, there's a lot of information back there.
Hey Heather, I got a question on page 13.
Sure.
At the top, when it talked about the total governmental funds, inter-governmental, that 3.1 million, was that a transfer?
That is money made up of, I can't remember exactly the detail. I don't know if there's detail in the back or not. Normally, it's things like grants. If you all had money from a particular, a source from maybe the state or other local governments. Anything related to what we call inter-governmental. I can't remember what, anything, would there be anything big in there last year? It was the inter-governmental, $3,164,495. I can't remember if anything-
Is that our inter-local agreements, Stacy?
I remember local agreements falling in the back. Is it a governmental revenue percentage that?
They do. That is right.
So that's the revenue that we, that we would receive, right? For the ones that we had?
Yeah, and there's municipal road aid is in there as well. If you look on page 46 in the back, there's $668,000 of the municipal road funds. So that number as part of the other governmental funds. So $600 and some thousand dollars is, so it's those types of things. It's things that are related to your agreements with other governments, grants, those types of things.
But if we back that number out, would that give us our true income for the year?
Well, a lot of that income is fairly regular. So I would, I would say that that is true income. You know, because it's things that you all are doing typically every year. The only time that I would, I would say you definitely have to think about backing a number out would be if you had like a one-time, maybe project, that you were getting a huge grant and you knew that you couldn't count on that in future years. That's where I would definitely think, to get your true income, so to speak, that you wouldn't really want to, maybe it was a million-dollar grant that you had a project for and it was in that number, then you wouldn't want to necessarily count on having that every year. But a lot of what your sources, you know, are fairly regular. If you look at that inter-governmental number from 2014, that number was $4,259. So, I mean, it stays 3, 4 million, just depending on what you all have, so. Any other questions?
Down under the expenditures, I guess that capital outlay, that could be, that could be the money that we borrowed for the police department?
That is primarily the police. If you look under capital projects fund, capital outlay, $4,019,544. I think that was primarily the police. So that's what that number is.
When those big projects come through our audit, they certainly show up.
Yeah, they start really kind of shifting the way things look. But you, you know, if you all budget for it and you all plan for that, that's kind of the point of government. You know, you have some years where you're going to maybe eat into some of what you've set aside in previous years. And then other times, you build it up so that you can do projects in the future.
Do you give us a grade on how we look?
Your grade, believe it or not, is those first couple pages that I mentioned.
Very, very nice.
The opinion. So like I said, that's as kind of as good as it gets in the accounting world.
He's wanting an A, B, C.
Yeah. Yeah, we get a, we get a pass or fail kind of grade in accounting.
David, we passed, so that's the key, right?
Any other questions for Heather?
Lot of information.
Do we, do we need to add on? Good. For your information. After you all have a chance to read through the footnotes.
Have a test?
We'll have a test. It's going to come during mayor's comments, three weeks from tonight.
Oh.
Well, if you'll ever have any questions, I mean, they know how to get ahold of us. So you can call and ask. You read something, you don't think it doesn't make sense or whatever, we're always available to you all. So feel free to use that if you wish.
Sounds good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks for having me.
And this will be public record whenever you need it or want it. Before I call Bob up, I did leave two things off the mayor's comments.
I knew it. Mayor, we done went through that. We're down in the agenda.
It's both good news.
We'll take good news.
Very quickly. We got an update from Jack Donovan about the petroleum release down at the center of town site. The latest report that we've gotten is that, from our environmental contractor, is that they anticipate receiving a favorable report within seven days from the state thus allowing the project to move forward and the cleanup site to be filled in with clean dirt. So we're very near the end of that little side detour that we took. And it was relatively minimal cost. Also, just wanted to mention, probably each of you have seen the big headline. I thought the news graphic did a really nice job of getting into the details of the transaction. And between the city and the church on Cardone. And while it's been largely, very favorably received by the public, I think having this kind of detailed information out there will help the public get more comfortable.
I think Mike did a good job writing that up. I think he wrote that, if I'm not mistaken, Mike himself.
He did.
He did a good job.
Yeah. And it's a big enough deal to where I'm glad that the right information has gotten out there for everybody. Let's see. Under the engineer's report, we have a municipal order in your packet that's going to allow us-
You missed Bob? Bob, we passed you up and he's going to keep on passing.
How bad do you want to go? Let me back up on the agenda. Just one number to GMWSS. And Bob, I would invite you to present your budget for the coming-
Thank you, Mayor City Council. It's that time of year again, we present our annual budget for hopefully your approval. I'll try not to be one of these items that bogs the agenda down. So I'm going to be really brief.
Thank you.
The board approved this budget on May 17th, so it's had their approval. The Fund One revenues for the next fiscal year budgeted to be $9,425,000, which is an increase of 3.47% from the current year. Fund Two revenues are budgeted to be $1,762,537, which is an increase of 2.54% from the fiscal year 2016. And that means our total revenues are projected to increase $259,520, or 3.32%. On the expenditure side for Fund One, the proposed expenditure budget is $9,675,285, which is an increase of 2.3%. The Fund Two expenditures are proposed to be $2,251,311, which is an increase of 1.36%. And just for your information, total reimburse is the water company for all those expenditures of Fund Two. Under capital projects, we have $1,171,000 in department requests, which will be funded from our annual revenues. Capital contributions from Toyota will provide $225,000 for capital projects at wastewater plant number two. Under vehicle replacement costs, we budgeted $388,000. The biggest chunk of that is to replace our camera truck for inspecting our collection lines. Our major capital projects for next year total $1,785,000. This will be funded from our depreciation and savings account and our existing line of credit. Our debt service, which we are required to maintain at 1.3 times, this budget will actually meet it at 1.8 times. So we'll be in good shape on our debt service coverage. And I hope you've had time to look at it. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Only question I have is there any projected rate increases on sewer or water this year?
Not in fiscal year 2017. We're fortunate that, due to the increase in our customers, since economies picked up again, we're generating additional revenues every year, just starting to increase in customer base.
And you're not short on water right now either?
Water's flowing through it right now, yeah.
We'll have his spurs come back and give you a second.
Are we, are we nearing the capacity at which you all need to start evaluating?
At wastewater plant number one, we're getting close. According to our discharge permit, at 75% capacity. We had to come up with a plan for expanding the plant. We're running about 73% on average. We know what the plan is. When we get to 80% capacity, we'll have to be under design and then we'll have to go into construction. So it will, I'm not going to say it's imminent in the next year or maybe two years, but probably within five years, we'll be looking at expanding that plant, which will be a major capital project. And that was, that will be required under our discharge permit.
I think those are the big picture things that we need to communicate along with, along with the operating budget. Any questions for Bob?
I'm sure it's in here. How much debt do you have altogether right now? Do you know?
It's about $12 million. It's about $12 million on net assets of about $95 million. So it's a pretty low debt service ratio.
And then are you going to be borrowing money this year for those capital improvements that you mentioned?
If we do, it'll be out of our line of credit. It won't be a bond issue this year. What we typically do is take it from the line of credit and then we'll bundle them together and go to the bond market every few years. We did close on our new building last week. We anticipated borrowing a million dollars. We only borrowed $500,000, whichever, whatever, to pay the rest of it out of cash. So, because we've been planning on this for a while. So our plan is to have that debt retired within 12 months.
Do you have a plan for the old building? Or is it anything you can even discuss at this time?
No, I don't mind discussing it. We have a crew in the basement right now, jackhammering the floor. Going to pour a new floor where the floor was damaged. And once it's fixed, I'll be asking the board permission to declare the building surplus and advertise it and take skilled bids on it. We've already had several calls that are office people wanting to see it and wanting to put bids in on it. And I'm sort of holding them off until we get it ready, give everybody a shot at it. I think that's what we do with it. Then whatever we get out of it, we'll put toward the debt on our new building. So I just speed up the paperwork on that.
The word caveat emptor comes to mind when we-
No, we will disclose everything. It's going to be 100% transparent. They will know exactly what they could be facing, as you all know.
Okay.
You'd have to.
We have to.
Yeah. Bob, one thing that I guess want to ask you about, if you all have ever thought about putting a spotlight on the water tower that's not too far off of, well, out, out close to the pavilion there. I mean, everybody that drives up and down 975 sees that, that water tower and it's got the logo on it, right? And I've seen other committees, you know, kind of highlight things like that.
We talked about that years ago.
We did.
Did I bring it up then?
David, it didn't go through it, I'm sorry. The bug went out.
Don't you make a motion?
There you go.
That was landscaping. I know I've worn that one out. Moving on to a brighter subject. In all seriousness, think about all the people that travel. It's marketing. In all seriousness, think about all the people that travel. It's marketing. And even if it shut off, if it was on a timer and it shut off at 1:00 a.m.
Shut off during the daytime, right?
Yeah, obviously during the day. Is that something you all could look at? Could we ask you to do that?
We can look at it.
He's gonna come and ask you for some money.
It's another electric bill we gotta pay.
It's a reflection of community power. It might be working. If you look at it, we'll talk about it. Any other questions for Bob?
I took it.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
On contingency that we get the light up though.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Bob.
Bob and I are still waiting definitive word from the potential of the Stockyards being involved with our sewer line project. Also, Bob helped us with a, we had indicated to the council that we were gonna go down, a group of us were gonna go to Frankfurt and meet with representatives of the Division of Water and the Kentucky EPA. David was able to join us for that meeting. Bob accompanied us, the judge.
Gene Thomas?
You were there.
Gene?
Yeah, and Gene Thomas from Wedco. We think we got, we think we heard what we needed to hear from those agencies. That they're very aware of the environmental concerns that the trailer parks represent. And they, once we can cause a sewer line to be placed out to the trailer parks, these agencies will be in a position to force the trailer park to use the pipeline. Pretty much what we heard.
It was.
We just wanted to make sure that as we went forward with these large expectations of what the Division of Water would do to support our position, and we confirmed this.
That's good.
Mayor, or maybe I can ask Bob as well, has anybody, have we heard anything from the prospective buyers during their due diligence period? Who that might be? Have you been contacted? Right.
No, I'm not. I was contacted earlier on for some potential buyers, but I'm not actually saying that I'm claiming to be a buyer.
Laced information actually suggests it's not as far along as perhaps we've been led to believe. That is, that the bank is still actively trying to get it transferred into their name. But they did say they've had multiple offers on it, so we're not sure where that transaction is yet. So, we got that updated last week.
So, we stay tuned on that one. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Now, we're ready for number nine on the agenda. Council's aware that we've been dealing with Sims Road landfill since I was a city councilman. A very long time. And we're close to the end of that saga. Prior council has did the heavy lifting of getting a sewer line run to Sims Road landfill, so the leachate is now being handled via sewer line. But we have two remaining sediment ponds that we need to get rid of. And we think that as we get rid of these two sediment ponds, that all we're gonna have left is monitoring the old landfill to look for any leachate outbreaks and making sure that the leachate flows through the sewer line and handles those problems. This has been, I think, one of Kyle's goals, primary goal since he got here, is to get us completely out of Sims Road landfill, and he's just about got us there.
Well, we'll never be out of the landfill business, but we're getting as much liability out of the way as we possibly can. This project has been around for a while and finally getting around to it. So, we bid this out a couple of weeks ago. We did free bidders. The lowest bidder was microgroup environmental contractors in the amount of 69, approximately $69,000. This is budgeted. If you don't have any questions, we're just asking.
I do have a couple of quick questions, Mayor. Don't mind. There's no leachate draining into these ponds now? All that's been totally diverted and being picked up by the pipeline. Is that right? And I probably should've gone out there, but what's the capacity, or what's the, I guess, the situation with those ponds as they exist right now? Do they hold water?
They hold water. So, before the lines were put in the ground to capture the tow drains, to capture the leachate, these ponds were the areas that captured the leachate, and we would actually go and pump them out and then haul that. So, the cost savings was to put the tow drains into a pump station and pump it to the wastewater treatment. So, as part of trying to reduce our liability and get rid of our individual landfill permit, if we remove these, that gets us that.
So, you wanna drain them completely, clean them and fill them?
So, it would cost a little too much to try and fill them, so what we're gonna do is take out the berms on the lower side, do water them, and actually take some of the muck and kinda use that, dry it out, and use that as fill, so that when it rains, everything just drains.
And that's $69,000. There must be a lot of work involved. You know what? Acreage these two ponds might, it might have been in the proposal.
I should've brought a map. Offhand, I don't know, but one of them's quite big.
I guess I was maybe in hopes, and I know it's our, you know, this has been talked about, just something that came to mind was creating kinda like a wetlands-type area, you know, where you have cattails and shallow waters, things like that. And those things are being created. I mean, we pay the Division of Water, you know, when we get something remediated, we gotta pay them huge dollars to go towards these projects somewhere else. And I was just wondering if this could be one of those, or a potential possibility of a project.
Those are great projects in areas that aren't landfills.
Yeah, I understand.
Treasure intent is to keep it as dry as possible.
The more water that has the ability to go into the ground and actually get in those tow drains, we pay that pumping fee every month. This landfill is old enough that it does not have a clay cap to it, has a dirt. So, anytime it rains, that water goes into the pump station, and we pay GMWSS to treat it. So, this will also help reduce some of that infiltration.
Okay, and I didn't know what elevation the ponds were at and what that overall impact might be, but I'm very familiar with the pipeline and the benefits that that created, so. Okay, I just wanted to ask those questions, Mayor. I was just trying to think of maybe ways to cut down this cost and be environmentally friendly at the same time.
Yeah, 'cause it hurts you feeling. Spend $70,000 just to get rid of a couple of muck ponds.
That's right.
But this should be the last time you have to do that, though. I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Any other questions for Kyle? The two sediment ponds at Sims Road. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Second on the item under the engineers' portion of the agenda, and I'm gonna ask Chuck and Connie if they'll help with this presentation.
Chuck will. I was on vacation, don't you?
This issue has been before the Georgetown Traffic Committee. For those of you that haven't had a chance to attend a traffic committee meeting, it's a pretty busy committee. They meet regularly. They have detailed agendas, and they dig pretty deep into some of these issues and then bring the recommendations forward to council.
I was. Right here. Wait, come back here. Okay, right over here.
You sure she was here? Are you here?
Okay, right over here where the alley behind used to be, where Galvins and all that, right here, and coming in this way off of North Court and coming this way. They wanna make it one way, come in this way.
Smart.
And not go all the way down. You have to come out this way or out the alley. Okay, and then if you come in down here off of Washington, you can't come all the way up and come out. You need to have to go out that way or not at all. No, we decided not to do that. We stopped at the back.
Back of the building.
So, there's not any more.
So, it's just one way from the corner of the building out?
Yes.
I mean, coming from this way, coming to the corner of the building is one way.
You gotta turn left or right.
It's not one way.
It's really just the street and the lane of the building.
That's where it used to be years ago.
I think.
Think so.
I can't remember it ever being that way, Karen. Can you be in one way?
I remember it being two ways, but what's happening now, more and more, because we have more downtown traffic
going through there.
and more people walking downtown. It's a, every week, it'll happen multiple times. We'll see somebody drive up this way, drive up between the courthouse and Galvins, and then back into a parking lot. And when they're finished, they've got no way to get out except to keep going out the wrong way and go out onto Main Street. Plus, there's so much pedestrian traffic. And we're encouraging people to use this beautiful new parking lot. We just think it's a real public safety.
How will it be marked? I mean, I think that's a good idea, but how's it gonna be marked? Is there gonna be arrows out here pointing at that direction, or?
So, down here, there will be a do not enter sign, a one-way sign. And then on the side here, there'll be an arrow pointing down.
I wanna block it off for a while.
Did you all discuss the alleyway that kinda goes down? You know, one thing that could happen is we could close off Court Street, and some of the people that live down there, have businesses down there, would not be able to access those properties if they can't come up and make that left-hand turn.
They make that turn going out this way and come back out on Hamilton. They can, they have access. They just, there's just no coming in off of Hamilton.
Okay, onto that little alley?
Alleyway, yes.
Yeah, it's one way.
That live there.
On the parking lot.
Yeah, but you could come up from the Justice Building, up the hill, and take a left on the alley, correct?
The alley's not, the alley's open for whichever way.
Did we do the alley either way?
We didn't talk, the only thing we talked about with the alley was whether or not we'd cut off the do not enter down here or at the alley. The way the MO is written, people would either come down off of Main Street and turn right on the alley.
I understand.
Or they would come north on Ham, or come off of Hamilton onto the alley, and then have to turn right here.
They can't come in.
They can't turn left.
So, the alley's two ways there?
The alley is.
Still open.
As narrow as it is.
Never had a concern about it. We've had concerns about this. That's what's...
Okay.
So, you're coming in, you're coming in from courts, you're coming in to City Hall, and you're able to go down to the parking lot, but you're no longer able to go from the parking lot up to the front of City Hall?
No.
Everything else remains.
My thought, or my concern, was if the alley's just one way as well, hypothetically, which it's not, I guess, and Court Street was one way, and we had an event, that's where the access could be denied, but you say that's not an issue? I'm with you. Yeah.
And eventually, we hope that that alley gets some real nice attention. What's been done with South Court Alley has given us some hope that this could become a real nice walk through.
You know, it's just barely wide enough to get through.
But if we clean it up light at some, I can see it having a real pedestrian.
Considering it's an alley, it's actually kinda busy.
Yeah.
This might not be the appropriate time, but I wonder, it's gotta, it needs to be paved or...
There's an additional problem. There's a retaining wall farther down on the left side that's failing.
Okay, so, we're gonna have a sign here at the top of the hill that says one-way.
Going down the hill.
Do not enter.
I'm not sure we're required to put one there. But down here at the bottom, there will definitely be a do not enter or a one-way sign. And then if you're coming off of the alley, there will be a one-way sign. It doesn't matter what cars up here do, but I mean, they're not gonna, you know, they're gonna only be able to get in.
Wouldn't it be beneficial maybe to put one up here at the top of the hill just to help change that behavior? I don't know.
I'll have to check the application. But we didn't look too much into how it was gonna be designed. That's standard from state law. The question was whether or not we change it to one-way, whether or not how the signs get go up according to the manual.
Kyle, there's, back here, and maybe the council's not, didn't like this, but I've seen in other cities where they're kinda narrow alleyways like even this is, and they'll put, actually write it on the road, do not enter, or one-way, or something like that. I mean, I think the signs up here might be kinda hard to see, but maybe if it was on the road as they start to actually go up and realize it's yellow there, is there a possibility to sign it that way?
I mean, we could. We definitely could.
Yeah, we're gonna be changing some long-held behavior.
Oh, yeah.
So, we need to give people as much signage as we can.
'Cause I think you're gonna miss it on the building or on the side here, but if you saw the yellow on the road, that might get your attention.
Well, the only thing when we talk about the yellow on the road is when we have snow and those kinds of things. Those alleys, they don't get cleaned off, so then you don't, you can't.
Well, I mean, you could do both, but by the time the yellow wears off, then people start to be used to the fact that it's maybe one-way.
We'll work on the signage.
So, is there a motion for approval of the traffic committee's recommendation?
I'd definitely make a motion.
Mr. Bradley with the second. Thank you. Are there other questions for Chuck, or Connie, or Kyle? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Thank you all.
Thank you, council.
And the last thing, under Kyle's report, council's been asking for updated information about Derby Estates. Kyle and I spent some time last week reviewing where we are, what might have happened since the last time council talked about this, and what steps we could suggest. So, Kyle sent you all a pretty detailed email that had a lot of documentation with it. We didn't intend to cover you up with information, but there's a lot of information about this project. I promise I'm gonna let Kyle describe it. Previously, we, where council has, where we have focused our attention before has been on Project Area One. That's where we did the wing wall repairs in the last year. That is also the area where the prior council, several members of the prior council, asked if we would approach the state and have them review their calculations on whether or not they had increased water volume. Intuitively, it seems like they would have. But even since I got in office, we've met with District Seven, we've asked about this area and these calculations specifically. And they reviewed their calculations, and their conclusions unfortunately match what our consulting engineers calculated. We don't think the state's gonna change our position, and we don't have good data to give them to urge them to change their position. Project Area Two, I think, is the area that you all have been receiving some calls about and some concerns about. Since council last considered this issue, Kyle, on his initiative, got us a second engineering plan in an effort to save us money, to keep us away from some electric utilities that were gonna be very costly, and just a better engineering solution. The difficulty with the plan Kyle has developed for us to consider, option one and option two, it will require us getting more easements, so it may be less expensive, but it may be more difficult just because easements in an existing neighborhood are sometimes hard to get. People need to understand why they need to do those things. As Kyle goes through his detailed explanation, a couple of things that we're facing in Project Area Two. One is the natural flow of water within Project Area Two has been significantly changed. the natural flow of water within Project Area Two has been significantly changed by homeowners' fences.
I think they know that, actually, from, from telling me.
The result has been that the, the water has been channeled into a much narrower path than what it was originally intended to flow in. That increases the velocity, it increases erosion, it increases a whole lot of problems. It, it means that one of the solutions, when we choose our direction, will be, we're probably gonna have to ask a bunch of homeowners to move their fences a significant amount of distance, which is gonna impact the way they perceive their own yard and their own property. It may look smaller to them. So, keep those issues in mind. I think we've, we're not gonna make this decision tonight, but I think the biggest decision that we have to face is whether or not the Council wants to undertake the project for Area Two at city expense, given the fact that the engineering estimate to fix this problem in Area Two is between four and five hundred thousand dollars. It's a big question. It goes to the heart of all of our discussions that we've had for the last year and a half about stormwater issues, and how we address existing stormwater issues, and how those are funded. The budget that we have presented you, uh, we've gone through a presentation and, and hope to have first reading tonight. It currently only includes one hundred thousand dollars for stormwater repairs, simply because we hadn't figured out yet how to fund all of the stormwater projects that we have all over Georgetown. Things that I want Council to consider as you look at these options and consider what we're gonna do, if, if we undertake repairs like this at the city's expense, I think our path going forward is probably gonna be us fixing stormwater problems at city expense. And we do not have the budget funds to do that. If we decide that we want to move forward at city expense with this project, then we've got two engineering options to consider. After we review the information, where I'd like for us to leave this tonight is we don't have funds budgeted to make the four to five hundred thousand dollars in repairs. If we did, I'm not sure they would be our highest priority of storm sewer problems within the city. If we're gonna spend that kinda money on a project, we have to make sure that we've got the right priority. And we wanna make sure that we're addressing storm sewer problems that are a part of a bigger fix, rather than just fixing a piece here or there where people are loud or people are unhappy. We've got an obligation to try and look at a, at a larger area. So, the question, to bring this back to the Council, is perfect timing, because it, it wraps up a number of the issues that we're dealing with. Well, with that grim setup, Kyle, would you, uh?
So, essentially, my email spells out a lot of the issue, and it was really to bring up some of the new members, um, council members, to know a little bit more about what, what we were all dealing with at the time, and what those citizens were dealing with. And, um, I just have a couple pictures and a plan or two to show you what things kinda look like, so everybody has a good visual. As the mayor said, Project Area One was approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, it was a wing wall that had failed, and, uh, if we hadn't fixed it, it would deteriorate in a road around the head wall, uh, and possibly take up from the road. So, um, that project was funded, and I'm just gonna show you before and after. So, that was, that was the before picture. As you can see, the block wall's fallen. Um, there's a big scour hole there where the water first drops off the apron. It creates a large hole. This, this is a, this is the face. We put in that concrete apron that directs the water. Uh, we reinforced the block wall to kinda keeps it in character. And then, um, that, that mat is a TRM, it's a turf reinforcement mat. That will stay there. Grass will grow through it. It's, it's anchored to the ground. So, that area will not erode for a very long time. Um, this was the downstream shot. Uh, that was not, these pictures aren't the worst storms. These are pictures that I was able to take. But some of that water there is two to three feet deep, um, and it is fast. All types of gullies, and as you can see how narrow it gets, that's when it gets really deep. So, this, this was the fix for that, and it's wider, it's shallower, it'll flow a little bit slower. And again, that mat will help prevent, uh, further erosion. And it looks.
Looks good.
Uh, Project Area Two is down here by Tim Pam Trail and Donna Rail. Uh, this is the basic flow path. The white T-shaped object in the left hand of the picture, that is where the state has their outfall under the sound barrier from the new, uh, bypass area. Um, as you can see, it, it flows through a small channel between houses, and then it goes into, in between the fences, uh, to go under Southfold Forbes, and then it eventually terminates in Cracken Creek. So, again, these pictures aren't the worst pictures that, that people have out there, but these are pictures that I, I was able to take. Um, this is, this is yard flooding. As you can see in this, in this subdivision, electrical was installed at the rear lot line. And the rear lot line also happens to be this stormwater easement.
Kyle, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
I think at least, at least six, at least five of us saw this presentation about two years ago. For those that are newer, that haven't seen this, is there any way that you could possibly, I don't know if you can reach it with your hand, or at least point out where that electrical box is, so everybody can see. I saw it underwater.
I don't know what I did. It decided to close itself.
We're gonna get one of those fancy laser pointers for the next one.
We need a different laptop.
I know what the.
We're gonna use the computer in there, too.
I know how you feel, but it does that.
It do it.
Kyle did.
It's all talk. Uh-oh, he's back up.
He's coming. He is Mr. Computer Guy. He knows what he's doing. Here we are.
The mark you, you.
Yeah, the green box.
Yeah.
Right there.
Green box.
In the middle.
Transformer box.
Just so everybody knows exactly what that is.
Yeah, it's underwater.
It's completely covered.
There have been pictures of water actually covering that box, I believe, or close to it.
Close to.
Closer to it than that.
Comment, is that box put right in the middle of where the swale used to be?
Yes.
That's why it's being covered?
They were allowed to install a utility box in a drainage easement.
No, I don't, I don't.
That's what I'm getting at.
I don't know what came first.
We don't know what came first, though.
Whether it was the stormwater easement or the utility easement, because that line there is actually two different plats. So, everything to the right of that electrical line is one flat, everything to the left is another flat.
Wasn't Tim Pam an extra, wasn't it like a, an afterthought?
Yes.
Okay.
Free houses or something, or four?
You know, that, that's an interesting question right there.
It's very.
Could, could you not find out, you know?
Which came first?
Which came first, and then try to go back on one of the utility providers and say, hey, look, we think you've got a little bit of exposure here.
You've got a lot of exposure.
I mean, if I was utility company.
The problem that we're gonna have is both plats weren't approved.
I understand that.
And it was fifteen years ago.
But it, but, but there's an easement between both plats, right?
Yeah.
Are you supposed to be putting utilities in an easement?
No, you're not.
So, let, let me ask this question. Is the biggest problem the, the safety issue with utility boxes? Or is it just the, the high water levels getting into the yard and the fence?
So, I'll get, we, we did, um, our consultant did a survey. They surveyed forty, um, houses in this area. Uh, we only had twenty respondents, but a lot of them were along this corridor. Of all the people who responded, one person is receiving water in their house. But we'll get to that. I'll show you, I'll point that out to you at the end, and you'll see why.
Have, I'm just curious, is that, is that Kentucky Utilities?
Oh, no.
Have we talked to them, or has anyone talked to them about? Do you know what their response was?
They're not easy to deal with.
No, I don't know. The utility company is.
I, I haven't been able to even get a, a lump sum vote to.
The, the real issue that we have is typically with a, with a, a utility company, your franchise agreement says if there's issues with the right-of-way, the utility company is required to move it, but I, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but my recollection is it specifically says we're responsible for moving it.
Unless it's in the road.
Right, unless it's in the road.
Yeah, we can force them to move it.
Well, but if it's our change, we're still responsible for it.
So, that last picture was to the left of this picture. This picture's now looking to the right downstream. Um, again, I've seen water flowing up on both sides of the fences at least. There's another electrical box. This is the property right above Southfold Forbes Drive. They've got a swing set.
Yeah, in the middle.
In the middle, but, I mean, this is how it should be flowing. This is how it probably was flowing before the fences were put.
Would removing the fences help the situation?
Yes.
It'll let it spread out.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be so deep.
Would removing the fences help the person that has the water in her basement get rid of the water in her basement?
No.
Okay.
So, this is now looking on the opposite side of Southfold Forbes, and you can see McCracken Creek in the end there. The one house that receives flooding is the house to the right here.
To the right?
Yes. Just can't win with this laptop.
Our right or your right?
Yeah.
Gray house.
You're right.
All right, right.
Um, I mean, as you can see where the creek is, and you can actually see in this lower flow storm, you can see water starting to.
Seep toward their yard.
Will some pump help that basin owner of that house?
Probably, if you just show.
Yeah.
Depends on the amount of water.
Is that because it's, the water's running down faster than it's allowing it to go into the creek?
I haven't seen it actually in a situation where water's coming into the house, but my guess is that the creek gets high enough where it backflows up the ditch line. That's why removing fences, uh, would be cheap.
Removing fences would, would help others.
Right.
Along the path, but it wouldn't help this end.
Unless it moves water faster ahead of the peak of the Cracken Creek.
Right.
That's a possibility.
Kyle, does that, does that house have a basement?
I don't know offhand. I would assume they're a walkout basement.
Just wonder where the water's getting in.
I think they're both walkout basements.
One on the left definitely looks like it. You know, as we're facing, it looks like a.
So, uh, the, the next pictures were taken today. This is, uh, a little bit of a belly that's starting. Actually, this has been here for a while. As you can see, all the cables, most of these are coax cables, not electrical lines. Electrical would be in conduit. Um, but these are all internet.
Is the electric line through that center?
Yeah, there's about nine of them there.
Okay.
Electric's gotta be a little deeper, doesn't it?
Like three feet.
Electrical's actually to the top right of this picture, a couple feet, and it is deep. You can imagine trying to funnel water between these fence lines. Water takes the path of least resistance.
Sure.
I like to know who votes.
So, like, like, this is a flood insurance rate map, and as you can see, this hatched area down here on the right side is the hundred-year flood plain. Um, but you can see where, how close it comes to those two houses at the end of that ditch line. So, that, that's why their experience is flooded, because of both the creek and from the additional water from the ditch line. I know this is hard to look at, but this was the original plan. Hard to tell, but the head wall over here is from the KYTC project, and as you can see, the entrance pipe is a little bit offset, offset from, from where that was lined up. This plan was done to stay within the easement the entire route, um, which made it, obviously made it difficult because, as you saw, you can't just put a swale ten feet wide. The water just wants to go a little wider. The next image will be a detail showing you how we overcame that to stay within the ten feet, but this is the general alignment, just staying within that easement. Now, uh, down here, we're widened out a bit. At that point, you would have to get some easements. We do need to widen it there, uh, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll show you why here. This, this is the detail. You have thirty-inch pipe underground, which will carry most of the flow most of the time. Um, when you get a much larger storm, a hundred-year storm, the water will actually flow on top of the pipe in the swale as well. So, you'll have water flowing in bulk channels. Um, and that's, that's taken care of by, there's a little boxes along this in different points, and those are actually elends that capture water. So, it'll allow water to flow. Uh, and that's how we were able to convince it down into the ten-foot easement, which sends us deeper, which now we run into more electric utilities. But that area widens out at the end there because you can't have that swale coming out at the same point where the pipe discharges. You actually have to maneuver the swale around. Otherwise, you'd have a long length of pipe exposed out of the ground. So, a year and a half ago, this was the estimate for that plan. About two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, plus an, uh, a very rough estimate of a hundred thousand dollars for electrical. So, as I said, we've met with Owen a couple times on site. It's been very difficult for them to give us cost. I think they were on a, they hire a contractor on an hourly basis, so they aren't really open to providing a lump sum. I mean, maybe we can talk to them again, but that's, those were our.
We had them go get cost.
It's about sixty dollars an hour to, to move or roughly conduct, and that's a KU bid. They're contractors.
But, um, but that, that line that runs down there is, is the high-powered line for that area.
Another practical issue you've got is, all right, right now, you've got an overlapping easement for utilities and stormwater. So, one of them has to be moved, 'cause we're not gonna put electrical back in.
No.
Hopefully, we're not gonna put. So, somebody has to buy those easements from those owners. I mean, if it's just burying electrical line, it shouldn't be that big of a deal, but moving, moving a stormwater easement, also, time, money, headache.
So, um, like the mayor was saying, uh, that first meeting, we came back to you with the plans. You all approved the wing wall project, and then this project, you asked us to go back to the state and ask them for financial help, because, um, at the time, we all felt that the state had, had been implicated in this issue. At that time, we also had the consultant go and form their own independent study, and they concluded that the state's report is actually fairly accurate, and, uh, according to best engineering knowledge and calculations, that they have not increased the flow substantially enough to create that type of issue. And then I lost my place. And after that meeting, after that meeting, um, in an attempt to try and reduce costs, I had ECSI work with Owen Electric and develop a new plan to try and avoid as much, as much electrical lines as we can. after that meeting, um, in an attempt to try and reduce costs, I had ECSI work with Home Electric and develop a new plan to try and avoid as much, as much electrical lines as we can. That blue line that you see is a rough idea of where that line, line is, it's too hard for me to try and overlay two cat plans, it would be too confusing. So, as you can see, it, it lines up better on the top left with the state pipe. Um, that's just common, common sense. And it, it, for the most part, it follows just to the, uh, south of that proposed, first proposed line. And when you get to that area in between the fences, it lines back up, because that's really, there's really not much of a choice there. So, as you can see, this would require purchasing some reasons, but we would be avoiding a lot more. I think that's it.
Kyle, the house is getting no, no water in the basement. You said that it probably happened because the creek was backing up. So, that plan wouldn't even help that situation.
Correct. I, I'm, I, I don't know for sure, but, I would say it's a combination of both, of both.
Is that even a basement lot?
The drainage swale is the lowest area where you direct water to get out, so naturally, if the creek keeps flooding, keep flows, that's gonna be the area that receives the backwater.
Is that a basement lot? Should a basement have been built there? You hear that all the time, you talk about building houses, it's.
I mean, they're both, both of those houses, uh, have walkout basements. Should they have been built there? I probably would have built them a little higher, but, you know, the firm map I was telling you about, this map. You know, the, um, gosh, this is too black and dirty, doesn't FEMA, you know, they don't have all the money in the world, so they can't make these maps as accurate as possible. Um, so there's a lot of leeway in between the decline and the fall. Should, should the developer have gone out, had a letter of map revision, getting an accurate engineering calculation where the hundred-year flood plain line may be? But, you know, this was, um, ten, fifteen years ago. I would have built a flood plain, but, you know, I wasn't there when they designed it, so I don't know. It just seems off the coast, I mean, for all those houses. I mean, farther up here to the right, you can see they have larger backyards, which makes more sense to me.
Kyle, I guess you all have looked at a lot of options, or, I don't know what options are out there, but I'm sure you've considered other options, or thought about if there are any alternatives, right?
To what problem?
I don't know, reducing the water flow perhaps? Um, some kind of a, kinda like we did with the Bradshaw farm?
I'm trying to recall, I'm almost certain we looked at building a pond up top, actually, I do recall. So, the state, the state is now putting detention basins, so they say they don't, because they don't want to maintain them, and it, it's not their job to maintain detention basins, it's their job to make them grow, so, we came up with the idea to put a detention basin where the outlet pipe was, uh, from the sound barrier. And, that area was just not enough, and didn't make a dent to let it be closed.
Does a lot of water come from underneath the bypass?
Yes, 'cause now I've been up there where the pipe opens during a rainstorm, and it's Judy Tenazio's backyard, and her backyard is here, and then kind of a, an area here, that she said she used to be able to use, and then it goes back to where the pipe opens up, and it was completely soggy in the yard, she can't use that part of her yard anymore. And then when you go on back, I mean, it's up past ankle, ankle-deep back in there, and that big pipe, I mean, it's just gushing through there.
What's on the other side of the bypass then, where the water's coming from?
It's a farm.
Could, could anything be done there?
So, again, I'm drawing from a long memory here. I'm almost certain the majority of the flow is coming from the rest of the sub. Up to the north here.
Coming back toward it.
Coming down.
Yeah.
Why do you not, where would it come from because of, we don't, well, I've been out there with Judy, because she's called me to come to her house when it's raining. And I've, I see how it's coming through her yard, which is up there where you've got the line on that coming through, so where's it dropping off then on the rest of it? Is it coming underground, or where does it drop from the rest of the subdivision?
So, it's hard to tell, but there's a, there's a pipe that discharges here off a donarail.
Uh-huh.
There's a pipe that discharges here off a donarail.
Okay.
And, all this up here, you can't really tell, but, all this up here comes down this way additionally.
Okay.
Is it the fact that the state raised the, ran up a little bit, where it naturally might have.
Spread out a little more?
Spread out the load, they've.
That was my thought.
Kinda channeled it back down.
That was my thought, but.
Calculations didn't prove that.
Yes, their calculations.
So, anyway, you have looked on the other side of the bypass at the farm?
Yeah, and you're not gonna get that much runoff from the farm, the runoff, we, we'd have it be from the road.
When you say the road, you talking about the bypass?
The new bypass, that's where the runoff will come from.
Could any channeling or gutters be put in place to?
Take it on down a couple hundred yards.
Trying to pull up a Google map, but, I don't have any faith in this computer.
No, electricity and water are not a good mix, I think we all realize that. It's kinda like, the old same plane with pressure relay here, I mean, it's how.
The electrical company will tell you that they're designing.
And, and the reason I ask that is, and I think we've, we've been told, that there are kids that get back there and play, but that water gets up high.
I would.
Well.
I think what Mark's getting at, though, if that electric box shortens out or something, the kid's in that water.
That's a. Yes, and it might not, you might not have the same fear, but I'm erring on the same caution here, I mean, this has been going on for years. How, what happens if that box short, short?
Electrocution, yeah.
And it might not be a kid up there by the box, it could be a kid down in, in the creek.
Right.
Doesn't have to be a kid, if you've been a dog.
So.
That's my fear.
So, to sway that fear, it would need to remove any, shut up and doubt that water would be hitting those trenches.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is, I mean, we, we've got homeowners that have called Karen, obviously, they've called me.
Right.
And I, maybe whoever else here has been calling, I'm not sure, there's probably others, but, you know, it's always, it's a concern, I, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, the, the solution that we proposed would contain the water for a hundred-year storm within the pipe and the new ditch.
How much on the, on the second, the second proposal that you put up there, what kind of cost are we talking, are we talking the same with that, or do we have a ideal?
I haven't gotten to that point.
Okay.
I had them do a simple revision, and, uh, I didn't go too far with it, because at the time, it wasn't too much interest in the public.
Okay, here's, here's my problem, but I did not read your historical email, I didn't know the shit, but that's my fault. Um, but one of the things I have a problem with it, and the mayor's talking about how do we pay for it, that is an issue. But, it sounds like from what I remember, from what I understand, it's the fault of the city for allowing it to happen in the first place, not the city, but I guess planning and zoning, and when they were developing, to allow the process of it not being adequate for, for what it should have been. Is that true or not true?
It could be, I mean, I wasn't there.
Right.
Again, when it was first built, I'm sure it flows just fine. Didn't the water stay within the easement? No.
Right.
But.
But over the years, that, that swell has just continuously been filled in where it's not, it's level, it's not, there's no swell there at all.
So, the bottom line, do you believe if it was put back to the way it was, and that's taking fences out of, out of line, that's obvious. But if it was dug back out to the way it was originally, when it was said, okay, subdivision, you're ready to go, is that gonna take care of the problem?
See, we don't know what that was, I, I looked, the only plans I can find don't have finished grading on it. You know, we don't, they don't, they used to not really save finished development plans, they'd save it same class. So, I can't tell you exactly what grade it was.
The, the, the homes has a plot of their property, correct? How far out, wide, stuff? You would be able to measure the distance where their property stops meets other, and you'd have that distance in between.
Oh, we know where the easement is, yes.
How wide of an easement roughly was it?
Ten foot.
Ten foot?
Way too small for this type of flow.
Yeah, there's the problem.
Well, and so that was done in the beginning then, if that's what the easement was, then it was approved too small in the beginning. Which is where I have issue with, with saying, okay, what's the city's responsibility, what's Hummer's responsibility and all that? It's not, now, if there are fences in there, yeah, they need to move the fence, but, it's not their fault if that's the way it was proposed and accepted and developed, and it was developed wrong, that's not the homeowner's fault. That becomes planning and zoning should have never approved it, which is a extension of what we are. So, that's where you kinda get caught in a catch-22, which is happening in many, many different places all over town.
Well, it's not only a new development, uh, the oldest parts of town have stormwater infrastructure that are, that's too small, too old, it's nobody's fault. Who can afford to fix it? I'm, I'm not sure how productive it is to figure out who's at fault.
Well, at the time when Derbya Estates was developed, I mean, you know, we weren't as big as we are now, and from my experience, you know, the times have changed, the pipe size changed. All of those things change as they progress, because they have newer and better and bigger. So, you know, at the time, they did it, they did it according to what it was supposed to been.
Most of the farmland around it too.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know what else is involved in it, but, you know, like I said, these are two different flats, built at different times. So, how those two lots graded together, I'm sure was not someone's prime directive to go out and check. And, and I don't, I don't, you know, I can't find a grading plan, so I doubt it. It's, here's the low area that, that takes.
And so now, today, we have a problem.
This is, this is part of why we passed the ordinances that we did though, to prevent, to help prevent this kinda thing happening.
Futures in the future.
By requiring that there be maintenance, that there be approved plans, that there be an engineer who says, this is the plan, it's gonna work.
So, is that one up there, does that one show where you're purchasing easements, or is it showing?
Both of them, you'd have to extend the.
You would have to extend home.
Right, but the, the blue line would require more easements than that.
You think you'd actually have to purchase easements when you're trying to make improvements and help peoples?
Do you think that there's a possibility that some of the people that own those houses would be willing to work with the city and not have to purchase those easements? Just to have the.
Would be a question.
It's possible.
Yeah, I think so too. Negotiable.
It's not certain.
Right.
And you gotta realize that, as the mayor said, some of these people are gonna be, you know, going, you're gonna take, what, you're gonna make me move my fence how far? And, and, and it might even be, we're gonna make you move your fence instead of moving it seven feet, now you gotta move it seventeen feet. And they're gonna, they're gonna say, well, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do to compensate me for the loss of my backyard?
Yeah, but we did nothing.
Well, you know, and maybe we need to have that conversation with the neighborhood, say, of course, maybe the mayor's right, we need to figure out a funding, how we're gonna fund or not fund. But maybe we need to have that conversation with them, and enough of them say, don't touch my fence, don't do this, don't want that, not gonna give you the easement, not gonna let you come onto it, then say, fine, then we leave it alone, we don't do anything. It's been like that for years, we leave it. If they're willing to say, okay, we want this problem fixed this bad, that we're ready to sit down and see what we can do to fix the problem, then I think you're looking at a different thing, that they're willing to, to put my fence back and give, dedicate my property to it and do that kinda stuff. So, I don't think we've had that conversation with the residents out there to see what they're willing to do.
We, we haven't yet, I can envision, uh, I can envision a meeting much like some of the HOA meetings.
At the beginning.
In the, in the beginning. What, what, what we had kinda talked about, we didn't wanna simply bring this complicated of an issue to council and dump it out on the table in front of IBA and, and have no, no place to go. A couple of suggestions that, that we would like to make, uh, we've got, we know we've got two different engineering plans. Each have different pros and each have different cons. Uh, I thought about asking the Public Works Committee to help us dig into these plans and, and pick one of those. Kyle's even, uh, brought me an idea of a broader stormwater committee that might have other, help us with other stormwater prioritizations, which watershed we start with. All the issues that, as soon as we open this can, there, there's a lot of stuff in there. And let us do some of that work during the ensuing several months. We know we're gonna have to come back with, same way we did last year, we're gonna ask council if we can bring you back an amended budget halfway through our fiscal year. Because there're gonna be changes that we wanna make. Depending on our consultant's report, we may have to revisit the budget for the consultant's recommendations, or for a garbage truck, or for recycling. We'd like, hopefully, to have some conversations, maybe even with the neighborhood. And then talk about our ability to fund this, if it's our desire to move forward with it, and the neighbors are in a cooperative stance, then we could consider whether or not we could fund that at the six-month period of the budget. And it's, tonight, we don't have that four-hundred-thousand dollars to spend. But I think tonight, we do have a whole armload of issues that we need to think about.
Can't resolve it continually, no.
No, but, but, I'm, I'm really pleased that we, we, we've brought it back up and we've got this level of understanding about it, because it, it's, it's an existing problem. Uh, Mark, you're right, there's a concern about mixing electricity and water, but there's also a concern about mixing water and speed of water, which is just as dangerous to little kids or adults. And somebody could be washed away, and, and we could have a tragedy that didn't even involve electricity.
Have we brought in any body that specializes in stormwater issues, specifically Kyle, engineers, or, I mean, obviously you, but I mean, anyone that's, that's their, you know what I mean?
A real engineer.
Well, no, I say the same thing about Andrew.
One that gets, one that gets paid, Andrew.
Well, I don't know if you all specialize, I assume that you do, kinda like attorneys do, and, uh.
Working here, I've gone from specialization to diversity.
It's, it's, it's learn as you go sometimes, ain't it Kyle?
Right. But, um, no, I understand, um, stormwater theory and all the problems, I used to design swales and pipes and basins. We, we've, are you talking about this project specifically, or overall?
No, this project specifically, in terms of looking at what other creative options might be out there to try to take some of the pressure off, to make it somewhat manageable.
Well, we've looked at other options, um, and ECSI was the engineer that did these plans, um, they've done plenty of great engine plans. And, like I said, we looked at other ways to contain flow, contain it up by pipe.
Right.
There's no other place to leave the container farther down.
Yeah.
Um, that's just not enough, because you've got more of a flow which bypasses it coming from the rest of the subdivision. That, that's why that detention basin didn't work. And you've got the constraint that we had, we started with was staying within the easement, so we had that compressed idea to stay within the easement, and the pipe's expensive. This other option is similar, it's just we're avoiding more of the electric, and we're having to go with more easements. Another option is, you know, getting a wider easement, removing all the fences, maybe even back to a certain point, and developing a. and developing a ditch line that's wider and shallow. But, I mean, those are really all the options I can think of.
You can't go out on the perimeter of this development and, and stop the flow of the water before it gets to the, I mean, I know you can't stop all of it, obviously, but reducing a huge percentage of it, or.
Or directing it somewhere else?
I guess I keep going back to the Bradshaw property, and how we tried to capture that water, slow down the flow, all those things that we did. Is that, you know, I guess, I'm trying to look at it on the map like everybody else, I, I don't know. I mean, I know there's property around it, but I don't know exactly what the top, top harbor, if he looks like.
I mean, it's something we can take a note of, look at, but for water flowing down this area, these are the options. Contain it, pipe it, overlay it.
Well, it comes right off of the road right into Judy's yard, correct? I mean, there's no change in that.
Well, it comes out from under, it's coming.
Right.
Under.
Because her backyard's where the.
But I'm saying, that pipe's right in the corner of her yard, or whatever, and it comes straight on through.
Like Kyle said, unless it could be dammed up a little bit right there to stop some, some of that force that's coming out of there, but there's not a big, not a big area there to stop it before it actually comes on over into the state's property, there's not a whole lot of that in there.
Did I hear you correctly earlier, Kyle, to say, state essentially designed that culvert to use the existing easement?
No.
That culvert there?
See, their right of way is right where my, my blue line starts. I believe that's where their right of way is. There's a property line right here.
Yeah, but their, their outfall lines up right smack in the middle of the ten-foot easement.
Well, this is their out.
Okay.
So, this is the ten-foot easement.
What's the black box there that says KYTC surface inlet?
That's the type of inlet that KYTC specifies, which we took.
I got you.
Now, you said the outflow, but on that, isn't that the, you mean the inflow?
That forty-two inch concrete metal pipe outlet.
Yes.
That's the state's discharge.
But it looks like the elevation's eight thirty-six to eight thirty-four to eight thirty-three, looks like it's, that's all going downhill.
So, right, that's the back side of the sound barrier.
Yeah.
I got you. So, that's the side of the, the roadway.
Right.
Because the road's way up here, and then it goes down, and that's at the very bottom.
Right.
Well, so that's the bottom of the sound wall, there's a top, and then it drops again, and then there's the road.
It's like a giant soil pyramid that runs all along the east side of the road.
So, Kyle, the water's going this way?
Yep.
Okay, that's why, that's, that's, that's what I, I mean, that's what I thought. So, you can't go over here on this side of the road.
No.
And stop some of the water from coming under the bypass, slowing it down.
We designed an detention basin that essentially held water back from the property line on the state's property. And it didn't make a net of the flow.
How much water comes to that forty-inch pipe? A lot of water?
We did our calculations slowly, so it matters possibly.
That'd be a lot of water.
Right, but the majority of the water actually comes from.
The other.
Subdivision.
Okay.
So, you're not being able to detain it.
When you say majority, I mean, not like fifty-one percent, but a much greater percent.
I couldn't give you a specific percentage of stuff, but enough to not, to reduce the effectiveness of putting an intention basin.
On the other side of the road.
You're talking about on the northwest side of bypass?
Yeah, the opposite side of the bypass.
I don't know how you convince the state to do that.
I'm not thinking the state, I mean, if we're going to have to ante up $450,000, we'd go to whoever owns that property, and someday in the future, they're going to annex it and develop it and turn it into something nice. And we're going to, we can help them with that maybe. In the meantime, we've got a, some kind of an easement in place for a nice pond.
Lakefront lots.
And I guess my thought was, if that's half the water, if we could somehow slow that down, and the other half, maybe it wouldn't be so bad. I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to help.
Trying to be creative.
We, we've run a lot of iterations on a bunch of different ideas, and honestly, passing it.
Well, the worst part about it, Judy says it never did this until the pipe was put in.
Yeah, that's right.
So, you got the right idea, if you could convert it to opposite side somewhere.
And the homeowners, Judy, Judy said exactly what she said, but, and the homeowners that were through the, the easement always had water in it, but they didn't have what problems they're having now until the state did.
Extra water.
And put that extra, like Connie said, it was just a couple more ounces in there.
It doesn't take much to overflow the cup when it's already up there.
That's right.
It was designed for the flow that was going to happen at that time. Anytime anybody moves dirt.
You're, you're changing, changing the course of the water.
That's exactly right, and the state did that.
But they don't want to say they did anything wrong.
If you look at the picture, it appears that they're collecting water.
Right, that one gully, right down.
So, how, how would council like for us to proceed?
Well, I think David's right, see, even though you've done a good job of trying to find some other creative options, I mean, David, I would continue seeing if there was any other options.
The other side.
Still work on doing that, and see if there might be something, something else, and then after the budget, we'll see if, how the money flow comes, then bring the community back in here that is affected by it and talk to them about it. See what, what they will do to help what we can do.
I think we're going to need more of a solid amount of money, you know, the bids, some way or other, so we don't have to work, so that we know what we're working with.
I, I would like to authorize Kyle to get a more detailed estimate of the cost of the second set of plans. We could, if, we may have to guesstimate what easements may cost, but I think we should go ahead and get a better price on what option B is.
Yeah. And getting a price on option B, and maybe looking at those easement things. I think we should talk to the homeowners too, once we get a cost estimate.
I'd like to ask one more question if I could. About two years ago, when we really first started getting into this in great detail, and I could be wrong on this, and if I am, I'll be the first to apologize. But didn't when we go to planning and zoning, where we were having trouble, Tim Tam was even ever approved? Or am I wrong on that?
I think it was the discussion that we had.
Was it ever an approved street? The houses are built on that, that coal sand. Is there a way that we can find that out?
I, I can ask.
Okay.
I mean, it's a flat, so it's true.
Tim Tam was a, was an afterthought. It was, yeah, it was added.
It was going to be something else.
It was green space, wasn't it?
It was going to be, it was going, or they were going to develop it as part of the farm, I don't know, but they decided at the end they would slap on that Tim Tam, a little triangle.
Well, so, what I think was, they were, they were originally going to buy the property itself. Still got a empty, you know, hammerhead piece of stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, that's pretty talented itself. And building a street with houses on one side is a, it's a hard job. I think that the, the deal fell through, and they just did what they, they could get, get done. And that's why, why it's like that.
Okay, any other questions for Kyle?
No, sir.
Some we'll just have to figure out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
Just more in depth.
Good to have you back, sir.
Thanks. Good to be back. Tired of being in hospitals.
Good to have you back.
Tired of this computer.
Thank you. Just turn that off. Stacy, item ten on the agenda is first reading of the fiscal year 2017 budget ordinance. We can, we can.
Yeah, I have one, we had one small change, so just wanted to mention, as mentioned earlier, because we are trying to move forward with the at Davis Basketball Courts, that was a capital project in this budget. So, Parks and Rec Capital reduced by seventy-five hundred, which was supposed to be our half of that. So, that is the only change that was made since it was presented to the city.
Which place?
Sure.
An ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, section one. adopts by incorporated exhibit, the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, as follows. Governmental funds. Prior year revenues, one million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. Revenues, municipal taxation, two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Licenses and permits, seventeen thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Fines and forfeitures. Eighty-one thousand dollars. Intergovernmental revenues, four million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Charges for services, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Other revenue, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Other financing sources, transfers, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Total city revenues, twenty-four million, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Expenditures. General government, one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. City council, one hundred and five thou, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. City clerk, two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Police, five million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Public works, one million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, forty-seven dollars. Fire, five million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Code enforcement, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Building inspection, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. Dispatch telecommunications, one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Utilities, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Community services, interlocal, four million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Capital outlay, one million, nine hundred and five, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Debt service, one million, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Transfers to other funds, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine. Total city expenditures, twenty-five million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve. Proprietary funds, prior year revenues, three hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven. Revenues, sanitation, one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand. Recycling, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven. Cemetery, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, twenty-two. Other revenue, six thousand, three hundred. Other financing sources, transfers, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, four dollars. Total proprietary revenues, two million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. Expenditures, sanitation, one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five. Recycling, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three. Stormwater, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three. Landfill, two hundred and four thousand. Cemetery, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, forty-four. Total proprietary expenditures, two million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five. Section two. Authorizes the mayor, except as provided in the Georgetown Purchasing Policy adopted in Municipal Order 10028, to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section three. Provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section four provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, May 23, 2016.
Question, Mayor?
Thank you.
Um, I just want to clarify on the, the very first page under section one. Tracy, under municipal taxation, I didn't hear the changes that you said. Did you say two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, or two million, seventy-two thousand?
Two million, seventy-two thousand.
Okay, cool. That's what I had.
Good.
Yeah, the, and the changes that were made were incorporated into the ordinance, there were no changes since the packet had been sent.
Okay.
These were just changes selected.
All righty, thank you.
Mayor, do you have on the property tax, do you have it for your proposed budget, do you have it staying the same as the current year, or are you having it increased by the compensating rate?
Right now, we've got, pardon?
Yes, we increased it fifty thousand on the budget, I mean.
But is that, is that taking the same?
It's the same rate.
Yeah.
Right.
Is it the same rate this year?
We basted on current collections and looking at what we brought in this year. We didn't discuss any rate change.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
Any other questions for Stacy?
Yeah, well, not for Stacy, I've got one for you and the council as a whole. I would like to see the council go and look at salaries for the other departments, like the fire department, public works, city hall, and compare them with other cities, and see how we stand also. We made a big, if we make this commitment, we made a big commitment to one department, you know?
Well, we, we've actually made it to a number of departments.
I understand, but I still would like to see that happen though, you know?
We'd be glad to, but just in the last twelve months, we, we, we changed dispatch significantly. We changed the CDL driver's license significantly. And in this budget is included the significant raises for the officers in the fire department, so they could mimic what we did for the police department in their last budget. So, the only people that, the only people, folks that we haven't dealt with yet would be the labors at Public Works and the, and firefighters. There, there may be another group, we, we've pretty methodically worked through each of those, but would be, we just got a new copy of the Kentucky League of Cities Wage and Hour Survey, and would be glad to pull, pull that information together and show it to everybody.
Okay, appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, that would constitute first reading of the ordinance. I am pleased that, that, that both Ms. Tackett and Mr. Lesby co-sponsored the budget ordinance. That's, that's not to say that David and I aren't still talking about some of his concerns, and we'll continue to work on those. I, I don't want to give that, I don't want to ignore that. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is June the thirteenth, so this is one of those rare times where we've got three weeks between meetings. So, we, we've got three weeks to where we'll still be, we'll happy to answer any questions, specific line items. Chief Bossy and I are working on some additional data for, for the finance committee to go over. And then if we're, if we're comfortable, we can be ready for second reading on the thirteenth. But that also gives us a three-week interval to where if we needed a workshop or anything, we'd be glad to provide that. That also gives us the additional flexibility, if for any reason we weren't ready on 6/13, we'll have another council meeting on 6/27, when we could have second final reading and meet our July first deadline. Thank you, Stacy. Uh, let's see, Mr. Bruin?
That's right, last one.
Well, just so you all know, Andrew won the over-under, so, uh...
Oh, yeah, blame it on Andrew.
Chief Bruin, uh, several, uh, we, we, every year we have to buy salt, and this was the first year that we've tried the reverse auction. The KLC reverse auction. Uh, Chief asked us about participating in that. I know several council members had expressed interest on, on how that reverse auction might work. We think on commodities like salt and some other things, it's an ideal way to purchase. I'm not so convinced on vehicles and things of that nature that, that it, that it works, but, uh, go ahead.
On the reverse auction, we got, uh, when I first got here, Andrew had sent me some stuff. It was hailed on May the eleventh or twelfth. I think it was twelfth. We got four, four bids, uh, the lowest being fifty-six dollars from Morton. I think the highest was about eighty dollars, uh, compense or someplace like that. Fifty-six dollars a ton for, uh, we bid twelve hundred tons with what we did last year. We don't have to take all twelve hundred. We can take what we, what we need. That's about fifteen dollars a ton saving over that. Last year, I think, we did seventy-one. I think there's a MO.
We, we do have a municipal order, uh, purchasing, uh, let's see, Chief, twelve hundred tons?
Yes, up to twelve hundred tons.
Up to...
We don't have to take, we, we got those questions asked, uh, from KLC. It's actually KLC and CAKO both did this. We asked those questions. If whatever we bid, do we have to take it all? They said, no, we take whatever we wanted and then this remaining.
We've also made the approval contingent on...
Yeah, part of the...
Because, you know, last year we did it after we raised the budget, so...
But we have, according to the rules, we did the bid. The bid's only good for thirty days, so we have to go ahead and accept the bid before July first to get it at this price. Or we gotta re-bid.
Do, do we know how many tons we used last year? Any idea?
We bid twelve hundred tons, but I only think they took in nine hundred. And we were told, we thought, when I first got here, we, we had a discussion about, uh, do we have to take the other three hundred tons? Because the salt barn is full.
Right.
Talked to JR at the county about using it, part of his old salt barn. We do not have to take additional three hundred tons that we did take. But we can go ahead and get some at the new price. The money we have left in the budget for salt, I wanna get some of that. Been talking to Stacy about that. But we gotta get it approved before, I guess, June twelve to accept this bid. And that's the CAKO and League of City rules.
Well, you're saving fifteen dollars a ton, so it's, that's pretty good money. I'll make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
And we'll get it as, as what we need, you know, so...
Hope we don't need it.
Yeah, hope we don't.
I'd like to see us get back with the three hundred.
And a good thing, if we, if we get two or three hundred tons out of this budget, I, I know I've got enough money in that line item for two hundred, maybe three hundred. And if we need it next year, you know, we'd have extra money in that line item for more in case we would have it back. Hope we don't.
And getting access to half of the county's old salt barn is a real help.
Right.
We, we'd like to hit winter with our stocks completely full.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause there are times that salt gets hard to get.
Yeah.
It has.
And then you're in trouble.
Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions for Robert about the salt bid? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, Chief, you've got one other, and that's a grant opportunity?
Yeah, the League of City Safety Grant was, uh, and this is kinda my fault, I forgot to put it on the council. It was due May thirteenth. It's a fifty percent reimbursement. We've, we've got it for the last, I know, ten years or more, uh, and kinda rotates departments. When I first, like I said, when I first came back, talked to Megan, we realized, we recognized the training that we needed for public works. She contacted the League of Cities on some of the needs that our department has to have. They hadn't had any in a while, so, uh, she contracted it out. It was twenty-six hundred dollars, it's a lot of computer-based training. So, you know, when the guys, uh, I'll take a group and give them the training and then they can go do the routes and stuff. We've already spent the money, but we had an opportunity to apply for this grant to be able to get half of it back. I think the training total was twenty-six, sixty-two, I'm like, yeah. And we're gonna get about thirteen hundred back. But we have to have y'all approve it. If you don't want us to apply for it, we can always contact the League of Cities and tell them. We've already spent the money, the whole twenty-six hundred, it's just be a reimbursement of thirteen hundred dollars.
Well, then I'll make the motion for reimbursement of thirteen hundred dollars.
Buy some more salt, won't ya?
Okay. And, and again, uh, just because of some changes, uh, in the department, typically, as council knows, we, we ask your permission ahead of time before we apply for a grant that requires a match. That didn't occur this time.
Yeah, that, that was my fault. I kinda got out of that groove and forgot about it.
Surely not, Chief.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Think of Robert. Uh, now it's that part of the meeting that you all control completely. You all control the whole meeting anyway. What am I kidding?
To a point. Except for Mayor's comments. There you go.
Oh, the egg timer's still around here.
Mayor comment.
Okay. Millie, why don't we start it then on your end?
I'm good.
You're good tonight?
I am.
Thank you.
We've got horsey one hundred this weekend. And then also, uh, the day after the last council meeting, Chuck, the mayor and I met with tourism about the Main Street project and everything. And, uh, one of the really cool things that's coming up is a dinner series, which is gonna be once a month, and they're gonna have dinners, kind of a farm-to-table thing with chefs, really, pie and chefs. One's gonna be the Japanese Gardens, one's gonna be at Ward Hall, the big bar now at the Horse Park. So, it's gonna, it's the first two that they're doing it, obviously, but it's gonna be a neat concept, I think. And, um, you know, dinner, the ticket prices will vary, anywhere from fifty, I think, per person or not, but it's just gonna be a real cool way to kinda work in the, the whole restaurant, farm-to-table, you know, that niche, so, I thought it's cool.
Yeah, it was, uh, when Chuck and Polly and I sat down with, with Laurie and some of our board members, I was real impressed with the work they're doing on behalf of downtown and the plans that they've got for downtown.
Looks good.
These dinners, each one will have a, a guest chef. Justin Thompson from Local Feed will be one of them. Apparently, there's a hot new restaurant in Louisville named...
Ate Up?
Ate Up.
Like eight? It's on the eighth floor.
It's on the eighth floor of a building. That chef will be coming to Georgetown to be the chef for one of these meals. The new chef at, uh, the Lockbox at twenty-one C in Lexington will be one of the guest chefs. So, these'll be really cool community events that, uh, that hopefully we can all, all participate in.
When it paid up, no sending up. I'd be up.
I'll leave that one alone.
I know, right?
I can't talk that.
Um, Farmers Market is coming up Saturday, if I'm not mistaken. Let's pray for some good weather for them, and that's it. I wanna try to get next door and see what's going on, chambers with the judges. So, there was a crowd over there.
Is that right?
There were fifty-some people waiting to get in for seven o'clock.
That's Chris Lynn.
Oh, I told a ton of people and they shared it on Facebook.
That's why Rita came and got me while we were... The door's not open, get hold of somebody. So, I think Billy Parker showed up a little bit.
Good.
So, let's hope they come up with something very good, you know?
Absolutely.
Mayor, I wanna commend and thank Rob Bruin for the efforts that he's putting in right now. There's some things that, that we've seen, that have been done, that are, are really positive for the community, and it's much appreciated. But I understand, I do, it is, the, the whole department. We appreciate your efforts too, though, um, in terms of the leadership. With the horsey hundred coming up, uh, obviously, most of the riding is out on the county roads, but if, uh, if we could, uh, maybe kinda use the back it up truck and clean up some of the city roads or some of the bicyclings going though. The area that I'm thinking about, quite honestly, is where the, uh, the railroad bridge is, they're on Paris Pike. As a matter of fact, I was gonna ask about trying to clean up that landscape and weeds and vines start to grow up, those trees this time of year, and that's happening. And I was thinking, maybe we could clean that up before the horsey hundred. But additionally, those big rocks collect right underneath the bridge, and with people riding their bicycles under there, those are a huge hazard. So, I don't know. I mean, I know it's a state road.
We, we talked about the landscaping this morning.
Okay.
Who, Robert's on it?
You are on it.
The sweeper can go, we know. I'll have him go down the road that they're gonna be on this weekend.
That's good.
Big help.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a wet weekend, that's the worst part about it.
Yeah. Well, they've changed the forecast, it's, it's supposed to be a little bit more improved.
Like thirty percent.
Yeah. Yeah. But anyway.
Robert had cruised down, uh, today, working on the, uh, three dead trees right on the corner of Royal Spring Park and Main Street. It kinda restricts your vision when you're trying to pull out of Water Street, so...
Since you mentioned Water Street, you know, that's something we might wanna look at. That thing is wall-to-wall traffic going, it's parked with restaurants. You can't get through but one way.
Yeah, it sure is at night, at weekends, sure is.
And I hate to say what I'm thinking, but, you know, think about it, one way through there would make it a lot easier. Those are parked on both sides, and you can't make a car, you can't make a car.
It's been floated for a while.
Yeah, it's tough, it's tough.
We're a part of this, uh, I hope that this design studio, that we have the students come in this fall, can, can help us address some of those questions, cause we're, we're gonna have a success project.
We've got one already.
Anything else, David?
We wouldn't get a word in head, would we?
Mark?
I agree with Mr. Lesby. Chief Bruin, thank you and your department for what you do. Thank you. Second of all, thank you, thank Andrew and, and Kyle for your work on Derby Estates so far. Thank you and our corporate sponsor, Ed Davis. And I think because that corporate sponsor is such a good...
Corporate sponsor. That if we can do some kinda special recognition, um, and I don't know what that is, but if we can do that, I think that would be great.
It would be great. They're, they're the type to kinda shine that attention.
Mayor, what about a, a resolution honoring and recognizing both, both Mr. Hamiltons? I know Mr. Hamilton's kinda been in a situation.
Frank got home Friday.
Good deal.
Uh, this past Friday, and, uh, which was really great news for their family, uh, that he got back home. But, yeah, I appreciate those sentiments and, and, uh, uh, we'll, we'll talk about how to best do that. It's, it's been richly earned.
The only other item I had was, and I'm not sure what our schedule's going to be with the warmer weather that's finally got arrived, um, maybe any pothole repairs throughout.
Yes, sir.
All of Georgestown?
The infrared machine arrived today.
Alrighty.
So, we can work on doing the, the little better repairs. We have it in patching as needed, uh, and we do have, of course, paving coming up. Of course, Kyle's also, the infrared machine arrived today at three thirty.
We would bring bids for you all to approve at the first June meeting for...
In, in fact, what we're gonna do to compress the time cycle a little bit, Mark, on, on our street pavement, we've, we've placed the advertisement for bids for the streets, and we'll, we'll approve the bids and hold the MAP hearing at the same meeting. So, rather than link them together and take an extra two or three weeks, we can hopefully get it going. And we've got a really strong list of streets to pave. We're, uh, right now, we're, we're just a tick over seven hundred thousand dollars of, uh, street pavement. And that does not include the sidewalk changes that we have to make, cause for each street we pave, we end up having to change the sidewalk ramp just a little bit. So, uh, this will be a really big year for street paving.
If there are any... Once we get that list and, or see what that list is going to be, and then, are any city streets that aren't on that list that have potholes, do we just start jotting those down and just bring them to you?
Bring them, bring them to me?
Or to you?
Get them to Robert?
Any of those that are not on the list, we, we're gonna try to prepare with infrared and do it right. Kyle's got specs on how he wants to do it.
One of the ones that I know people will be glad to see on the list is Lemons Mill. The railroad bridge to the bypass. Every time we go to the Georgetown College Conference Center, when you... When you drive through all the potholes to get there, we will get that paved.
And you can't dodge them.
Not tonight, thanks. Well, of course. Uh, Stormwater, um, on the, the road that I gurgled about for, and text you for three, four months about parking on Thorndale, now that they've got the houses there, I talked to a couple of people over the weekend, and they have water running down the back of the house. Same situation as to what we're talking about right here. And I thought they were telling me because it was running down the front, that the drainage was clogged in the front. And they said, well, I'm standing on my back porch watching, I thought, wait a minute, it's coming in the back. So, they're talking about when it rained, like over the week that it rained, that there was a stream in the back of their yard, coming from the top yards, coming through, and of course, bringing the mud, cause there's not all the grass and stuff down there. So, since we're talking about these issues, could you see if there's something going on there or take a look at it now, while it's young, instead of waiting until ten years down the road and taking a look at it?
Yeah, cause we wouldn't do that for a council member for fifteen years from now, would we?
It's not my backyard, cause I'm sitting enough on top of the hill, but...
We would, but somebody might.
Thorndale, I think is what it is. Isn't, isn't that the name of our street, Thorndale, that comes through?
If you're coming in, is it on the left or the right?
It's, streeting is where the houses are built, so it's on the right. It's coming, all those new houses, it's down their backyard. Same situation this is.
We, water keeps behaving the same way.
Kisses it, it blows down.
I bet everybody eat at Panera tomorrow. Think about that, please.
That's right.
Eat at Panera and have a good supper.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.